And we'll turn it over to our investment guru.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's a pleasure to be here again. Being able to come down with you. On the phone with me today, I have Vinay Sharma. He's a senior portfolio manager with our firm. He is very instrumental in doing some of the modeling that we'll kind of go over with, go over a little bit later in the presentation. He's part of our multi-asset strategy team that oversees your long-term portfolio, the portfolio that has the equity involved into it. So there's a couple of things that he'll go over when we get there. Today, you know, I'll go over the markets, you know, do a portfolio review and also an outlook. Again, from going from last year, there was this big back and forth between all you guys, and it was a great meeting. So anytime I'm walking through this and you guys have questions, please stop me. Before I move forward, Mr. Mayor, how, what's my allotted time? What's my allotted time for today?
Until 5:15.
Okay.
I don't know.
5:45.
Yeah, 5:45.
5:45, okay. No, I got, I got a lot of data here. Some of them is here for, I'm anticipating some questions that I can point to, but I don't, I'm going to go through every single page. So my remarks will probably be about 35 minutes or so, 40 minutes today. So here on page one, this is the three accounts outside the trust account, kind of the account summary. And I split it out a little bit different this year. As you won, as you guys, some of you guys know that our relationship, APCM's relationship with the city started in March of 2005, and it was basically one portfolio, and that was the, what was called the short account. And these are all an account that had securities that matured anywhere from one to three years. It was a treasury agency, so very risk-off portfolio. And in May of 2015, the new strategy came. We've been working on that strategy with the city for about six to, six or seven months probably leading up to May. But in May of 2015, the portfolio split, and then that's how we got the three accounts. And the intent of each three accounts was a little bit different, where we, we broke it up into three buckets. One being the short account, one kind of being the medium-term account. The medium-term account has securities, treasury and agency securities that mature between one and five years, so a little bit longer than the short-term account. And then the long account, which has a asset allocation that has equity involved in that, large, small, mid-cap, small-cap, international equities, and I'll get into that. Both the medium-term and the long-term account was seeded with $8 million that came out of the short-term account. But since then, these are all numbers from, since the inception of the three, of the new strategy. The new strategy, we had 19.4 million if we added up the three portfolios. And today, the market value of those three accounts, as of January 31st, is 21.5 million. Now, that's important because that's, you know, about $2 million more. However, there has been $3 million in draws coming out of that. So if we think about where we started from, we're $2 million greater, plus you guys have been able to take $3 million out of that account over time since the 2015. We look at our returns, second row from the bottom in the shortage count. Again, very low risk, 1.28% on an annualized basis. Our medium-term account, a little bit longer, 1.48%, and then our long-term account that has 55% equity and 45% bonds. We'd expect a little higher return over time, and that's what it did at 6.89%. As we move and touch base on the market review, and we put these slides together towards the end of the year, and we've been updating them, and obviously in the last couple of weeks, there's been some exogenous shocks to the global economy and political events that are going to change some of these as we look in. So I'll, when I get to those spots, I'll, I'll add to a couple of things. But when we look at where we were last year, and we look at 2021, the calendar year, very good returns in equity. And when we, when we look at the turns in the equity, they were above, above average. And but within fixed income, as interest rates rise, we had muted fixed income returns. But when we think about where we were coming out of the pandemic and where we are now outside the Ukraine invasion, that we're kind of in this mid-cycle. The Federal Reserve is about to start raising rates next week, probably 25 basis points. So we're kind of in this mid-cycle thing. And we always start with economic growth, and we expect US economic growth to be slower than it was coming out of the reset, out of the pandemic. But still, you know, from a development standpoint, that we're looking at growth above trend line. So yes, we're going to be a little slower than we were in 2020 and 2021, or 2021. But however, we should still be higher than the trend. Same thing in emerging markets. When we look at emerging markets, you know, still positive economic growth of 5.1%. As we move through and we think about monetary policy, we've come off extraordinary monetary policy, where the Federal Reserve has kept interest rates very, very low. They've had what was called quantitative easing. They've, they've added trillions of dollars of liquidity into the market. And then on the third thing, on fiscal policy, we're coming off a large fiscal policy, where the US government has dumped trillions of dollars into the economy. And that will all still complain out, play out. So we do think that the, that the, between fiscal policy and monetary policy will be tighter than it was in 2020 and 2021. However, it's still, when we think about monetary policy and where rates are, we're still well below the neutral rate. So we still are very low on interest rates, still providing some positive to GDP growth. You know, when we set up, we always talk about key risk and the risk that APCM's looking at, what I, what keeps me up at night. There's kind of three. One is kind of now a little bit off the table is, you know, the COVID variants and things to that nature. I think we're all kind of tired of hearing about that, but it's still something that we still pay attention to. This last variant wasn't as egregious to what was expected, and the markets kind of got through that pretty quickly. So we expect that there'll be, you know, areas where it'll pop up, you know, throughout the world. But I think we're more on, on the other side, as long as we don't see huge hospitalization rates move up and death rates. I think the markets will kind of shut it off and just keep plowing forward. Another risk is policy mistake by the Federal Reserve. It's, they're going to have a tough go-ahead moving up as they start, as inflation is very high right now. They're going to start moving interest rate up as we, as they start raising interest rates. That's going to start putting pressure on the economic growth at some point. And they're going to be, have to be very fine with that. As they increase interest rates, if they get too high and too fast, that shouldn't, you know, hopefully not put our economy into a recession. So it's going to be a fine line between them slowly but surely raising interest rates and not putting any pressure on our economic growth. So that's going to be a huge policy risk going forward and something that we're, we're looking at for a while. With that, I'll pause there before I move to the next page, if anything on, just from, from a, transitioning from a recovery to expansion. As we move from, you know, as, as we're looking at the portfolios and, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring Vinay in here and his team is on, on page four. And we're looking at, you know, the mid-cycle and looking at above-trend growth and how it supports risky assets. And his whole team builds around the asset allocation in that long-term portfolio. So for the, for the next page or two, I'm going to turn it over to Vinay to speak to that.
Thanks very much, Bill. I, as Bill mentioned, the, the environment is still conducive, still supports risk assets. We have, as he mentioned, higher GDP growth than trend. We are looking at very robust spending expectations, both for businesses and for consumers. You know, even through, you know, the first two months, we haven't seen a reduction in spending plans on either side. And corporate health, as far as the equity markets are concerned, is fairly robust. So when we are looking at support for risk assets, it's very important for us to determine where in the equity cycle we are, or the economic cycle we are. As Bill mentioned, we've kind of moved into mid-cycle. And when we're early cycle in recovery, it's a situation that in the equity markets is fairly, you know, rising tide lifts all boats. There's a lot of positive emotion, a lot of positive expectations, and really everything rises. As we move to mid-cycle, we have to focus much more on selectivity. Where is the spending going to be? Where is the earnings going to be? And how has that changed because of COVID? Or, you know, simply because of what businesses and consumers want to spend on? So when we looked at expected spending in 2022, we noticed that businesses are expecting to spend a great deal this year. You can see that in the top right. Growth in capital expenditures is, is expected to be 14%. And we're looking at $895 billion in the US alone. So we look at where in other equity mark, in the equity markets, is that spending going to be? It'll be in industrial manufacturing and services. It'll be in electronics manufacturing. And it'll be in consumer goods and retail. As I mentioned, consumers are still expecting to spend above the normal rate of spending. Where we see that, where we see the highest exposures to those are US small companies and Japanese stocks. If you look in the, the bottom right, you can also see US small companies have the highest expected earnings growth. So we've overweighted US small-cap companies, and we've moved some weight from emerging market stocks to Japanese stocks. That move helped keep portfolio volatility in line, because Japanese stocks are less volatile than emerging markets, and also helped us emphasize those areas, those businesses that are going to benefit from increased spending. In addition, both US small-cap companies and Japanese stocks were, you know, not particularly overvalued. In US small-company stocks case, they were undervalued based on the long-term average. So when we see volatility pickup, the areas that have lower valuations usually react a little bit less because, you know, they're not quite so expensive as US large-cap stocks were. Additionally, we moved some of our commodities exposure away from the futures market and into natural resource companies. We did that for several reasons, one being those natural resource companies are less volatile than the futures market. Two, the futures market had already risen quite a bit. And expect, however, the natural resource companies that produce those commodities had not risen in conjunction with their increased earnings expectations. So we expected to be able to gain quite a bit in terms of positive return there, even if commodities fell or, you know, remained flat for the year. Obviously, until the Ukraine-Russia situation, that was working positively for the portfolio. But since the, the Ukraine-Russia situation, I think it's been pretty widely in the news that commodities prices have gone up quite a bit. Now, the natural resource companies are not negative, but have not gone up as much as the futures market has. And then finally, we are focusing the real estate section of the portfolio, more on infrastructure-type companies whose contracts are usually tied to the level of inflation. So adding some inflation protection, some inflation hedging to the portfolio, where those contracts are going to go up and their earnings will go up, you know, in conjunction with the higher inflation that we saw last year and continuing into this year.
And Vinay, do you want to speak to regarding, you know, returns moving forward, being a little bit lower moving forward and not being as high as in 2021 in our outlook on, on that side?
Absolutely. Bill's absolutely correct. In the equity markets, last year was an extraordinary year. And we do not expect to see that again this year. We do think we'll have positive returns in the equity markets over the year, but we're expecting single digits at most from the equity side of the portfolio.
I'll pause there. Any, any questions for Vinay? You guys are quiet tonight. Yeah, absolutely.
And it may not fit in here yet, but you brought it up. What do you see of the long-term effects of what's going on in Ukraine? Again, I don't think it's going to be over in a day or two, and it looks like there are massive destruction. I'm interested particularly in terms of how our investments, how you are moving them, shaping them, determining to, to take a correct response to what's going on so that what we have invested does better.
Yeah, great question. We were getting that question quite a bit. You guys have minimal exposure to Russia within this portfolio because of the ETFs that we own in it. So we don't have like direct exposure to Russian firms or anything to that nature. How this portfolio and, and Vinay, if you want to jump into, is, you know, through commodities, inflation. If inflation starts moving up, that should hurt the bond side of your portfolio. How we mitigate that is, is, you know, through that inflation and yields rising is to be a little bit shorter on our bond side. So we are not buying as long as bonds. So in your long portfolio, you can have bonds out to 10 years. Those are a little bit more sensitive to inflation. So we are a little bit shorter in that portfolio, and shorter meaning we're not as sensitive to that interest rate increase. And we own shorter-duration bonds in that portfolio. So that's one. That, that's one way that we're protecting the portfolio. Do you want to speak, Vinay, to the equity side and the infrastructure?
Yes. So I'll start with just looking at global macroeconomically. Both Russia and Ukraine are not a large piece of global GDP. And both are considered emerging markets, which, as I mentioned before, we lowered our weight to emerging markets and moved that weight into Japanese stocks. Japanese stocks also less affected by the issues that we're seeing than European stocks, for example. We also were anticipating increased volatility in the beginning of the year, all the way through possibly, you know, the first half. Our expectations were, were based on the markets trying to digest what the Fed was going to do and what other central banks were going to do and how that was going to play out. We didn't expect the Ukraine situation. However, we ended up being positioned fairly well for that, since we were already trying to lower volatility expectations in the equity side of the portfolio. And so one of the things that we did was, in the large-cap space, we have, you know, a factor tilt towards quality earnings stocks and dividend-paying stocks. And then we also added some exposure to consumer staple stocks, which are lower volatility, more defensive. As we look forward, you know, we mentioned the commodities piece and commodities futures prices rising quite a bit. Now, there are a couple of pieces to that. One is those prices are being elevated because there is an elevated risk to the supply of those. And, you know, I, I've seen estimates as high as 40% of the price right now is a risk premium because of the, the issues there. The other piece is, as these prices have skyrocketed, there are a lot of investors who were short those commodities, thinking that prices had already risen quite a bit in 2021. It was time for a reversal, so they, they were, you know, they had negative exposure there. And as prices rose, they had to buy back. Or, you know, they had margin calls, they would have lost quite a bit of money, which also pushed the prices higher. Our expectation is that as the uncertainty of the situation becomes more clear, we get more, more information, we understand what's going to happen, those commodity futures prices will fall. But the natural resource company equities that you have in the portfolio now will benefit from those higher prices that we've seen through their earnings and won't fall nearly as much or possibly continue to provide a positive return, you know, compared to the commodities futures that are in the portfolio.
I thank you, and you're, again, on that 30,000-foot level, and so I'll try to, I live on the ground. Recently, we've seen the cost of goods and a part of a group that was talking about building a new structure. We expect it was going to be about 800,000 and with the increase in price of everything in terms of building supplies, 1.8 million. So we walked away from it. Does our portfolio contain those items which would be affected by very significant increases in the cost of building supplies?
On the equity side or the fixed income side?
I'm asking you anywhere. That's what I'm trying. Do we, in what we have invested, okay? Will we benefit on the fact that these things are all doubling in costs?
Yeah, I think when, when we look at equity, the equity component of, of your portfolio, as long as inflation is not runaway, you should get some positive. Equity will give you a buffer with inflation. When there's moderate inflation in the economy, equities generally do good. And so that's going to be a positive for your equity. As Vinay was alluding to, some of that will come through earnings. Earnings will be up, revenue will be up. The one caveat is if wage pressures and things to that nature, does that eat into, into the corporate profits? But in general, when you look at history, moderate inflation is positive for equities. On the fixed income side, if, you know, inflation as it's moving up and yields move up, we'll be able to reinvest your portfolio at those higher yields. So that, especially on your short account, the one three, as interest rates rise, those bonds will roll off first, and then we'll be able to reinvest at higher rates.
So in your recommendations to us moving forward, will you have recommendations that would allow us, and I don't know the terms to use, but I'm going to say, that will allow us to take advantage of these increases in price?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. In your recommendations to us in terms of where and how we should move things and where they should be, will you have recommendations which would take advantage of the significant increases in the price of goods?
Within the portfolio?
That's, yes, sir.
Yeah, tonight, we don't have any changes in your asset allocation and within your portfolio?
I will just add that, as I mentioned previously, we've moved the portfolio to emphasize areas of high demand for goods and services, both from businesses and consumers. So we have already emphasized areas like industrial manufacturing is to take advantage of business spending as well as, you know, producers of consumer goods and retail stores. So we have emphasized areas that should take advantage of the higher prices and be in areas where demand is the highest and therefore would have the most ability to pass on additional costs to end consumers.
And I'd just say, I've seen this for 30 minutes, and so my expectation tonight would be, was it part of what you would do, would be making recommendations. So I appreciate that the question didn't fit because that's not what's in here. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone?
With that, I'll just briefly on page six, and then I want to get into the portfolio review. And I do want to get into a couple of scenarios before it times a lot. So I'm going to skip a session, go into the scenarios, and then if we have time, I'll, I'll come back. But, you know, these are the asset returns, just in pictorial format, where riskier assets in 2021 did much better, large cap at 29%, mid-cap at 25%, developed ex-US is at 11.3%, alternatives, meaning commodities, real estate, infrastructure, things to that nature, did well. But your risk-controlled sections that, what we call, which are the fixed income bonds, cash, US fixed income, things to that nature, didn't do as well as the equity side. So it kind of just shows in pictorial what we were demonstrating, you know, throughout the presentation. The portfolio review, starting on page seven, eight. This is, you know, a quarterly package that we put together for you guys every single quarter. Now, this first page on, on, on page eight and up in the top right-hand corner, this is all your investments. So these are the three portfolios that APCM manages, plus your checking account, plus your AMLIP account. So this aggregates everything that you have under the investment side. So if we look at where you were at the end of December, you had about 2.7 million in AMLIP. That's the Alaska Meniscal League Investment Pool. Think about that as a money market pool. You had a little over 200,000 in checking, your short-term 1.5 million, medium-term 7.8, long-term 12.7. You combing all that all together, you had about $25 million as of December 31st. Then when we break that out and we just look at the three portfolios that APCM manages, now we're going to strip away the AMLIP funds and the checking account and just look at the three funds. What is your portfolio assets? And this is what we get to. 67.6% is in total fixed income. And then we will look at the total equity exposure, 13.4% in total equity. And then when we look at liquidity within your portfolio, that's kind of in this bottom section, about 1.63 million of, of the assets that APCM manages. And this is what I was referring to, that as interest rates rise, we'll be able to invest in higher rates. About 1.63 million is going to be maturing within one year. We have a bucket of 6.84 million that matures anywhere from one to three years and so forth. And then your ETF exposure, which is mainly your equity, that's 8.88%. Or 8.8 million in exchange-traded funds. Again, up in the top right-hand corner, I mentioned this earlier, that, you know, I talked about since inception of this new strategy, you guys have taken 3 million, but there was a draw out of the short-term account back in the day of 4.5 million. So you guys can kind of think about that the total withdrawals from the monies being managed is at 7.5 million over, over time. Performance, short-term performance, quarter-to-date, this is, you know, I guess it'd be your second quarter fiscal year, second quarter. Yeah, fiscal years, yeah. So this would be second quarter. Again, it was, the short-term account had a minus 50 basis points. That's expected because as interest rates rise, bond prices fall. So we would expect some negative return performance in, in your bond accounts. Again, that same thing happened in your medium-term account of a total return of negative 69 basis points. And then in your long account for the quarter was 4.36% as equities did perform well. Again, when we look at the inception since these accounts, the short-term account since the inception of 2005 has returned 2.16%. The inception of medium-term account, which was May of 2015, was 1.62%. And again, going to this bucketing strategy, adding some equities to it, it didn't do, it did do what it was supposed to do, and it has returned 7.39% on an annualized basis since May, May 2015. We, we move to the next, and we look at where the unrealized and realized gains are. You have realized gains both in your fixed income and the equity components. You have about 58,000 in realized gains in your fixed, within your fixed income. And you have about $2.8 million in realized gains in, on, on your equity component. and you have about $2.8 million in realized gains on your equity component. On page 13, the trust fund. The trust fund is set up very similar to the long-term account, so the returns are going to be very similar. When this fund was set up, again, back in May 2015, it was 1.67 million deposit. Today, you have about 2.5 million in the account, and you can see the asset. The assets that it's invested in, the lower left-hand corner on page 13, about 43.6% of it's in fixed income and 56.4% in equities. So little overweight equities, underweight fixed income in anticipation that equities will produce a positive return. And as interest rates move up, their returns are going to be muted moving forward. On page 14, again, similar performance since inception, that portfolio has returned 7.31% over time. The one difference between the trust fund and the long-term is the long-term fund actually has corporate credit in there, where the trust fund does not have corporate credit. So the long-term fund outperformed a little bit more than trust because we put corporate credit in there, corporate bonds in that portfolio. I'm gonna take a pause here, and I'm gonna shift to page. If we have time, then I'm gonna come back to the economic market review, but I do think it's important. The one change that, or one thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about is on, starting on page 24, the allocation review. And this kind of goes back to what I mentioned at the beginning, and I've been working with staff to provide two scenarios with you guys. To take a step back, last year, I was in front of you guys, and we were having a discussion on the three buckets and moving money between the three buckets and what would that look like. We started with, back in 2015, there was 25% equity exposure in the portfolio, and now we're, we were getting up to 33, 34%, and did we want to dial that back? And when we came out of that meeting, you know, you guys were comfortable with that equity exposure, so we didn't. When I was in front of you guys, if we wanted to dial that back, there was multiple different ways to do that. But this year, I wanted to take a second and run some scenarios for you. And as we move to page 25, is kind of look at what a sustainable distribution rate would be off of a portfolio, the collection of your guys' assets. Kind of a sustainable distribution rate is a rate that you guys can draw on over, you know, a 10-year period without really diving into the corpus of the fund. We think about distribution rates when we have a lot of clients that are permanent funds or endowments or things to that nature. And when we're working with a permanent fund or endowment or a foundation, they want to know exactly how much can they draw off that portfolio over the long term, but still have some, be able to inflation protect and also have asset growth within their portfolios. So when we run these analysis, we run these sustainable distribution rates, and we look over, and this is where Vinay comes in, he runs a program, has 5,000 pathways, and tries to, you know, within a confidence interval, try to come up with, hey, what would be a rate that you could expect to draw off this portfolio and maintain your asset base? So we have, you know, there's always this concept between budget stability when we're thinking of, you know, with permanent funds and somewhat with this fund, that if you guys were gonna draw off this portfolio, what could you sustain and know that, hey, I could expect to have that for budgetary reasons? What is that number that you can withdraw? But at the same time, if it's greater than a certain percentage, your asset base will keep on dropping, and then over time, you'll deplete the account. So that's the number that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna come to. On page 26, kind of how we got here, and I just want to again stress this to you guys. In May 2015, the long-term portfolio had basically $8 million in it. Today, it has about $12 million into it. So that long-term portfolio with that equity, there's asset growth in that, and that keeps on getting bigger. The medium-term account had 8 million, and now we're at 7.7 million, so that's down a little bit. And the main reason for that is because there was a million dollars that was taken out of the medium-term account and moved to the short-term account as, in the very first slide. In the short-term account, it had 3.4 million, now it has 1.5 because of distributions out of that. So again, the long-term account with the equity has grown and is now 57% of all your assets where it started as, as a 41%. So moving to, and this is going to the, on page 27. With the makeup of your portfolio and adding all the three components together and looking out and what and we do our market expectations out 10 years and looking how correlations and things to that nature, we think that a reasonable estimate would be 3.9% distribution rate, that portfolio is going to earn about 3.9% on an annualized basis over the next 10 years. And if we, if we think about that 3.9% on the 21.3 million, this is scenario one. The expected ending market value in 10 years is going to be 21.3 million. So kind of where we started from, if we're taking all the earnings out, you know, we're gonna end with that. If we use 3.9% on the 21.3 million, it's about $844,000 that you guys could draw out off this fund. And as long as we hit that 3.9 every single year, we're going to, over, let me take a step back. Over a five-year rolling average, and then we take 3.9% market value, then this portfolio can sustain that and be able to have an average annual withdrawal of about $844,000.
Thanks, Bill. Can we, I just want to add an additional comment on the page prior 26. When Bill says that we draw funds out of the investment portfolio, what that means is that Melanie needs that money in our checking account to comply with our cash needs and our obligations. So if you look at the February 2021, you see that the short account had come down to about 559,000. At that point last year, a year ago, when Bill was here, we talked about transferring a million from the medium to the short. And so you can see here in February 22, we've got that additional million in that short account. At some point in the next few months, maybe this summer, we've got the SportsCenter remodel project, we're under contract. That contract will be kicking off, we'll start to get invoiced for that project. And at some point in the coming few months, Melanie will again draw those funds out of the short into our checking account so that we can comply with those cash obligations of our different expenditures. So I think that was just, I just want to add that a little bit, kind of anecdotal context for what we mean when we're drawing it out. It's just for our cash needs, typically capital related to which projects we have and when we're going to be invoiced for those. That is what that, what that transition looks like. And Melanie does that administratively based on previously approved projects and in consultation with Bill's office.
So just kind of staying and finishing up on scenario one. So the goal for me tonight was just kind of give you guys an idea that if you guys, moving forward, were gonna take a million and a half every single year, you would start depleting what the account is over time. We wouldn't be generating enough return to make up for that, you know, million and a half dollars that would be taken out. So that's what the sustainable rate, and it kind of gives a framework. And when we work with, such as yourselves and other clients, it just gets them to say, okay, what can we budget off this account over a 10-year period? You know, what is that? And we believe it's right around, you know, in 844. We'd like to be a little bit more conservative, you know, with that. But, you know, over time, we'd be comfortable with our, with 844. Now, in scenario two, I just did one thing different, we did one thing different, we said, okay, we're gonna take $3 million out this year, and then what's the sustainable growth rate moving, or sustainable payout moving forward after that? So you guys had a big project in the first year, what would be that moving forward? And what we found was that, using again that sustainable 3.9%, we expect the portfolio still generate, doesn't matter if there's $21 million or 18 million, we think that the portfolio is going to return that 3.9%. Now, between years two and 10, you guys are gonna take $3 million out in year one, and then what's a sustainable rate between, that payout between year two and 10? That's 758,000. And which makes sense that you guys have, the portfolio would have a smaller market value because you just withdrew 3 million, and then so the payout would be 758. Absolutely. Great question. We kept it at 31% equity exposure. So we just kept that the same, so we kept the variables the same. I'm gonna turn, Vinay, did you hear that question?
Sorry, I could not hear the gentleman at all. I'm sorry, I still can't hear you.
Yeah, I think I got.
Sorry, I suppose it would help if I had my mic on. I'm just asking with this, with this annual withdrawal that you guys are calculating for both scenarios, it seems like you're basically figuring out like, how much money can we get away with taking out each year without actually, you know, winding down the amount that's in the fund? So do you account at all for allocating any amount of the earnings to put back in and grow the fund itself so that the annual withdrawal amount can grow, rather than just keeping the same amount of buying power with what we get out of it each year?
Not in this particular scenario. That 3.9 would be essentially taking all of the earnings out. You know, based on what we expect to earn over a 10-year period from this portfolio. You can definitely save some to grow the portfolio so that that dollar amount increases over time. Simply by reducing, instead of 3.9%, you could take 3% out. And that would leave 0.9% of earnings growing over time in the portfolio. The dollar amount would be lower for both scenarios. And we can definitely easily run that and get that annual number for you.
And I'm not sure what a sustainable split on that would be, but I mean, let's say we're getting $840,000 as the sustainable withdrawal amount each year. I would love us to see, let's put 420 of that back in the fund and allow it to grow and just spend half of that, if that's doable.
Thank you, Bill. I was just gonna refer back to the page at the beginning that shows the draws. So we actually don't draw annually from the fund. There have been those discreet $1 million draws that are shown on page nine. And those, that's what I was mentioning with the SportsCenter project, the timing of that happens contingent on kind of our cash needs. So I think in modeling these scenarios, we were hoping to illustrate some of the different levers at play, particularly with opportunities for infrastructure and local matching funds. The council might decide that we've got potentially a higher capital budget moving forward in the next few years than we've had traditionally. And just trying to show the difference of pulling out additional cash now, what that means long-term versus modeling what would be a sustainable draw, even though that in and of itself is a hypothetical situation because we have not been drawing that amount of funds. We've been taking the $1 million chunks periodically, but not annually. Melanie's nodding yes, I didn't say anything wrong. Thanks, Melanie.
And I think, you know, the other, you know, with the variables, the other variable that we have here is we maintain the percentage that's in the short term, the medium term, and the long term. We left that static throughout time, so that was rebalancing at those things. So if you had a little bit more, you know, more monies into the long term because you never withdrew out of the long term, you know, this goes back to our discussion last year, you take the money out of the short or the medium term, in your long-term portfolio, your equity exposure is going to grow a little bit greater, you're gonna have more volatility in that portfolio. And, you know, possibly greater asset growth. But yeah, that, those are all, you know, part of the levers.
I have many thoughts on this, I'll wait till we're done with the presentation, so thank you.
No, I'm happy to. I mean, this is the take and give, but yeah, if you have more questions or?
I think you've answered my questions for now. I think my thoughts will hold till we actually get to the discussion from the council as far as what we want to do.
Okay, okay. But I think, you know, kind of going to the asset growth, things to that nature, if you take 3 million out and then you have 758,000, you take 758,000 between years two and 10, your ending market value would be that 9.1 million, so you'll have 2.2 million less in market value. However, you would have withdrawn 1.4 million more. So it does deplete the asset growth or the asset base in the portfolio if you took a big chunk. But, you know, over time, you know, you'll grow that back. But so this was just an exercise to put in front of you guys. Last year, we were moving monies, moving from one pot to another pot, looking at equity growth, things to that nature. I thought I'd take a different bit this year and take a look at, okay, what's a sustainable rate? Kind of get you guys thinking of, okay, if we were gonna withdraw money out every single year, what could this, within this portfolio in aggregate, maintaining the same asset classes and things to that nature? This is what we think that it would be.
Sorry, one follow-up question. So if we wanted to rebase and get back to the 25% equity exposure that we started with and minimize our current risk exposure, how much would we have to transfer out of that long-term bucket into the short or medium-term buckets to get back to a 25% equity exposure?
Oh. I'm gonna have to calculate that.
Okay.
I'm guessing 2 million, maybe?
Okay, thank you. Did you say 2.8 or 2?
I'm guessing right around 2, but that's quick math.
I appreciate that, so.
Taking 2 million. Vinay has a calculator in front of him, I hope, but it's, because you have about 60% equity in that long-term portfolio. And so it's, you know, every 2 million you take out, you know, that's about 1.2 million of equity exposure taken out, 1.2 million on that equity, on a $21 million portfolio. That's how I'm kind of roughing it back in my head, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And then I'll just kind of turn you to two more slides, and I'll pause there. You know, on page 29, and this is, we start diving into the return and risk characteristics of the portfolio. And again, if we, if we look at the long-term return, that's at 3.9%, that's sustainable rate. And we would expect an annual return range anywhere from minus 6 to 14.1%. So if we start looking at annual returns, there's gonna be some years with negative returns, some years that are positive. And if we think about what that range would be within a 95% confidence interval between minus 6% and 14.1%. And then if we look at extreme conditions, and we look through a one-year horizon, what would be a very extreme one-year? And we can expect this total portfolio to be down about 10.6%. So that kind of starts giving us an idea of how volatile this portfolio is, one way or the other. And I think, working, going through COVID with you guys in March of 2020, and I was in here right away, one of the things that you guys mentioned to me was, you know, hey, it's a long-term portfolio, we don't need any money out of it, so let's just leave it there, and that worked out really well for you guys. So it was, you know, the way you guys look at risk was correct in that aspect. And then if we look at, you know, kind of think about wealth simulations and certain things that we can do on page 30, and we look at, you know, Monte Carlo, this is the 5,000 asset pass. If we look at the portfolio and where could that be? That, there's that 21.3 million if we think about the average 50th percentile at the end of the year. If we took out in scenario one, that 844,000, well, we're gonna end up with 21.3. But however, the best case, you know, 5% of the time, that portfolio will be about 28 or greater. And then if we think about what the downside is, in worst case, it would be 6, you know, there'd be 5% of the cases that would be below the 16.4 million. So we can kind of think, start looking at, you know, the ranges and those paths to obtain, you know, at the end of the day for those market values. And this is, you know, when we And this is, you know, when, when we sit down with and we, this, let me tell you. This simulation is very good when we're looking at, when we start looking at different risk within the portfolio and different asset classes or different makeups. If you guys wanted to move up to have greater equity exposure or less equity exposure, looking at this type of simulation is a good thing to do. And it kind of puts it in perspective. We're on the next page, and I'll end on this. If we look at the scenario two, where we took that three million dollars out in year one and then took seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars out for the year two through ten. The median would be that nine point one million. But the best case scenario, there'd be only five percent or better at the twenty five point one, where in scenario one, it's twenty eight million. And then on the downside, under scenario two, it's fourteen point seven million. And on scenario one, it's sixteen point four million. So nothing that is, you know, earth shattering by any stretch. But I was just hoping that, you know, doing this kind of gives you guys an idea about what a sustainable distribution rate is, what a wealth simulation would look like and things to that nature. So the next time I'm in front of you guys and we do more of these types of simulations, we can add on to it. With that, I'll just open it up and take questions on anything.
Any questions?
I guess this one would be to administration. Are, are we going to be making any directives this evening as far as what we would like to see happen with this, with allocations? Or is this just more of an opportunity for us to discuss and for you to take feedback from us?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson. We didn't come tonight with a recommendation to make any changes. So if the council was interested in providing some of that direction, certainly it could be something that Bill or we could comment on tonight. It might be something that requires some additional modeling because the council has the ability to do that at any time throughout the year. There have been some years during this annual review where the staff and speaking with Bill and his colleagues don't inherently feel a need to recommend a change. And I think this is one of those years, we just wanted to be able to model the different scenarios. Last year, because the equity had grown beyond what the council had previously identified as a target. That was a year where we came prepared to have that discussion about if the council wanted to return to that different equity. What would that take? And if we were gonna move that, what would we plan to move? We haven't modeled those scenarios, at least we hadn't discussed them before tonight. But happy to receive feedback and if it requires us doing some additional work and coming back, that's, we're able to do that as well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing as you were talking about. If we could go page thirty three, it's actually in the appendix. And you had mentioned, Councilman Chilson, that about regarding the two thousand and fifteen portfolio and what that would look like with twenty five percent equity. And so we modeled that. And here, if we use the twenty five percent equity, which would be in that twenty five, twenty fifteen total portfolio. We could expect a ten year return of three point three percent. By adding six percent equity into, or maintaining that six percent equity in the portfolio. It moves the long term return from three point three percent up to three point nine percent return. So you can kind of start seeing, you know, as you add equity, what's the upside to that? So, you know, and we can put wealth simulations next to that and things to that nature.
Okay. This has been great information. I appreciate all the, all the intel you're providing us tonight. I guess my thoughts on this is, you know, we, it was interesting to sit through this, I think it was a year or two when we last reviewed this. And we're talking about, you know, how we are gonna respond to the, the growth and equity that we've had in this investment portfolio. And it's kind of, you know, grown quite a bit beyond that initial twenty five percent. And I think at that point in time, I was feeling a lot more optimistic about the markets, like, yeah, great, let's keep putting more equity in. Let's grow that portion and really kind of milk the market because it's just going like a rocket ship. But, you know, it's, it's different market out there right now, as you mentioned with, you know, everything that's going on in the geopolitical scene. And I know, maybe I'm just feeling a little bit more pessimistic, but my, my personal outlook on the market is not really positive. And, you know, so we're in that position now where I feel like there, there's more risk to the investments that are allocated as equities. And there's a higher portion of our portfolio that is in those equities. So I think there's more for us to lose should things go bad. But that's, that's again, in the short term. I mean, overall, I'm still confident that if we were to, you know, be able to ride some hits that were, you know, not great and hold on to it for ten years. We're still gonna come out positive in the long run. So I guess that's just a question is if, you know, if the market does get really bad in the next two years or so. Are we comfortable taking a big loss, you know, the thirty one percent chunk of our portfolio, as long as we're willing to let that ride for ten years and come back? And we're talking about having, you know, some pretty decent expenses coming up with the Sports Center remodel. So I don't know. My thoughts were maybe we should consider going back to the twenty five percent equity, kind of limiting some of our risk exposure there. I wouldn't say pulling out three million dollars for cash would be great, but maybe we should consider pulling out three million dollars and moving it into that short term bucket. Which reduces us back under that twenty five percent equity threshold. It makes that cash still somewhat quickly accessible, I think, for, for supporting the Sports Center remodel and other large capital projects that we have. And just kind of see where things go over the next couple of years. And if, you know, the outlook looks better, maybe next year or the year after, we look at maybe going back to increasing the amount of money that we're putting into the equity portion. But you're the expert on this. I would love to hear your thoughts on what you'd recommend for us, so.
If I had a crystal ball, I could be spot on on it. No, you're exactly right. I mean, obviously, and I kind of refer back to, I don't think we'll ever, well, I don't want to say that. Because I've done it twice in my career, in twenty years, to have the extreme, extreme downside as of the global financial crisis or COVID and being through May. And you guys were able to, you know, sustain that huge drop during the COVID and just kind of keep plugging along. And when, when, when you, we can't predict when it comes back. And I think that's something that a lot of people learned and a lot of our clients learned is it's, it's easy to, you know, to get out. But when do you get back in to capture that, you know, the upside? And the Federal Reserve came in and supplied so much stimulus that the markets rebounded so quickly. And I, and in my seat, I would never have thought that it would rebound so quickly. And there was no, I mean, there's no way. But I think when, when we're looking at these portfolios and sustainable rates and things to that nature is, hey, you have, you know, some in, you know, you still have seven point six million in your medium term. And you have your short term accounts. Are you gonna go through that anytime soon? When we look at you guys' cash flows, and I'll look to Melanie on this, when you're looking at cash flows and are you gonna draw those down? How fast are you gonna draw those down? Where are you gonna need money out of that long term bucket? That would be the question that, you know, would also have to fit into this, into this equation. Yeah, you know, I look at, you know, being with this portfolio my whole career and thank you for that. But, you know, going from having one, one to three bonds, very risk adverse, moving into more bucketing. Matching up some liabilities in the three buckets and then adding some equity and stuff. You know, it's been a positive. Is it always gonna be a positive? I can't sit here and tell you it's always gonna be a positive, but it is a positive. And I think if you guys were gonna take three million dollars out of this account, I would sit there and say, hey. If we're gonna go just like I did last year. Equity exposure goes from thirty one percent up to thirty six, thirty seven percent. I, you know, taking that three million dollars out, I'd be back in front of you guys saying, hey, here's our simulations. Are you okay with this risk, like I did last year? And that's where we come in and, and that's where we work as partnerships to say, hey, this is what we're seeing. Are you okay with that risk, the downside risk, the upside risk, and things to that nature?
Ms. Hodge?
Yes, my question is, we look at this long account at twenty one million dollars and it's at six point eight nine. Worst case scenario, even if our return came down to the one point four eight. It would still, you know, it would still be, what, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollar income on that? But I doubt that we would ever see it drop to one point four eight. I mean, when you're looking at a six point eight nine return, I mean, it would take something pretty drastic, I would assume.
Yeah. To move the, the long term account from six point eight down to one point. Especially because that's annualized over seven years now. You would need thirty or forty percent just in that long term portfolio down. I mean, a lot of things were going wrong if that's happening, you know, thirty five, forty percent.
I realize, you know, we're at, what, fifty seven percent? But we're at fifty seven percent because we keep building income into that account. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, yeah, you know, there's both fixed income and equity, yeah.
So I'm kind of happy with that.
Going from eight million up to twelve million, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're never gonna lose enough to go down to the one point four eight.
I'll never say never, but very low probability.
It's not really something that would.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to reiterate what I said earlier, that we're happy to answer questions offline and run through scenarios and modeling. Bill and his team are really responsive to questions that we pose. And this doesn't have to be the end of the conversation. It's a, it's a natural annual opportunity to have him face to face. And thanks for driving down, Bill. Thanks, Vinay, for being on the line. But I think Melanie would welcome questions, as would I, that we can direct to him and his team as they occur to you.
Ms. Zemalt, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Sorry, I think we've covered pretty much everything. I think I'd just reiterate what Stephanie had said about early on and what Bill was talking about, about our earnings since we started our bucketing. We've earned about five million dollars and we've only taken out three million, putting the two million back, you know, it's remained in, in our investment. So we're not pulling the money out every year, even as we, you know, continue doing capital projects. The million dollars we moved last year from medium term to short term. We moved that in anticipation that we were going to need it with the Sports Center project. But when that got put on hold, we didn't need it. And so it's still sitting there. So, you know, even when we're talking about sustainable draws and things, it's, it's not something that we've needed every year. Even though we've spent well over that in capital projects each year. It just depends on timing of when invoices are coming in and how our, our tax revenues are doing and grants that are coming in. And, you know, this year, we've, so far year to date, we're fortunate to be up about thirteen point six percent, I think, in sales tax revenue. So, you know, Stephanie mentioned that we may need here in a few months to take out that million dollars. But, you know, it just depends on the timing. It may be that our, our sales tax revenues cover it. We just, we just don't know. It's just, you know, kind of, we, we take it out when, when we need it. We leave it there until we actually need it. So when Jordan was asking about, you know, the, all the projects coming up and the need to be able to fund those. Like Bill was saying, we'd, we'd pretty much have to go through all of our short term and medium term to really hit that long term. The fixed income's just in the long term, I mean, the, the equity's just in the long term. So, you know, we still have a lot of money there to fund capital and, you know, as crises happen, you know. I don't know, I'm not sure what else I can provide, but be happy to answer questions.
Yeah, Melanie, I'll just add, the one piece of uncertainty when we kind of confer with Bill annually is what are our capital needs gonna be moving forward? And traditionally, we base it on kind of what have we historically spent on capital? And that's ranged from, I think there are a few leaner years, about seven hundred and thirty thousand up to a couple million, two and a half million might be what we, the city expends on our, our capital expenses annually. Moving forward, that might be different as we are aware of, you know, the, the federal legislation with the grant, grant opportunities coming forward. And our needs in terms of a local municipal match may be different than they've been in the past. But I think at this point, there's still too much uncertainty for us to be able to model those. We would just, with any opportunity or any priority that the council identifies. If it was a large project that we could seize an opportunity to move quickly, but maybe required a bigger local match than we've historically provided. We would just get with Bill and model that, as well as looking at alternatives for that match. Is there other grant funds for a match? Is there a loan for a match? You know, we could, we could address those scenarios as they arise, not yet knowing at this moment in time, maybe what's, what our needs might be over the next two years.
Mr. Carey?
Madam Manager. Obviously, it is wonderful to have lots of money and to keep making lots more money and to keep taking in lots more money. Have we ever done any study in terms of how much extra we're willing to take from taxpayers through different methodologies? Is there any limit to how much we're gonna take in more than what we necessarily need? Or do we factor that with no matter how much we take in, we'll just always find ways to be sure we spend it? And so somewhere, you know, in terms of a balance, you know, sitting here on this side, I think it's wonderful to have all this money. Millions and millions and millions of dollars and we're making millions and millions and millions. However, someone does pay, at least initially, and I understand when we invest it, we're making money off our investment. But the, the money for that investment initially did come in through some type of tax methodology. We're not like Kenai where FAA gave us all this land, we sold all this land, we had this huge amount of money we set aside. And so I'm just, have we, do we ever discuss whether or not there's a limit to how much more we want to make over what we have direct need for? And I just, in my years, and this is now ten years, nine years actually with the council on that. I just don't know if we've ever had that discussion. And maybe you guys do, and I'm just not aware of it. But again, is it unlimited in terms of how much we're willing to take in if we can? And I understand a huge amount is from tourists. And there are many people that say, no matter what we take from tourists, it's not enough. And so I just, I just wondered, do we ever, do we ever really have that discussion? Do we as a council, would we ever want to have that discussion? And so I just posed that to you because you're much more knowledgeable than I am.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carey. I think in response to that question, a couple of ways we think about that is, one, through the annual budgeting process. It was, we're looking at our own operational expenses as we're looking at bringing updates to the five year capital plan. We try to balance the revenues that are coming in with the expenditures either on the operating or capital side. And there have been several years within the last ten years where the city was in a deficit. So taking away from fund balance due to the necessary operating and capital expenditures as determined by the council and as proposed by the administration. So I think the timeframe, my, my opinion would be at this point, the timeframe is fairly short. In that we have not seen this runaway trend where our revenues and growth in this fund are excessive compared to the annual expenditures as approved by the council through both the operating budget and the capital budget. There's been a small amount of growth, but it's been roughly balanced by the needs that our expenditures have been determined. So we at the administrative level propose, when we prepare an annual budget, now our biennial budget. We have not proposed a reduction in sales tax and we have not, at least in my administration, have not brought forward a recommendation to lower our mill rate. But based on my four years here, it's because not every year looks very rosy where we are anticipating revenues far in excess of expenditures. Some years that happens. I know last year, we, we presented the financial reports. This earnings from this investment was our second highest source of revenue last year. So second to sales tax, so higher than fees, higher than property tax. The revenue from this investment portfolio was the second most significant source of revenue for the city. But it doesn't feel so far out of balance that it has caused us to bring forward a recommendation to alter the tax policy. If anything, we're trying to maintain what I feel is fairly low, looking at other municipalities, looking at the borough. When you're looking at the current level of sales tax and property tax, where I feel like we're fairly low. And in some respects, having this investment portfolio generate an income that we can draw on, either in lean sales tax years or in years where the capital needs are higher, provides us with the ability to maybe give some confidence to the residents that we'll be able to maintain that tax regime without, without changing from year to year.
If I could add a question, which may or may not be completely germane to this conversation. But since you mentioned it, you know, and I'll, I'll admit, when you come with these graphs and numbers, I get my eyes glazed over a bit and I'm a little bit new to this. But as we talk about the outlook and things, you were talking about expense. You know, of course, the thing that we all hear on the news is inflation is gonna run rampant, all the, you know, the costs for all these things are increasing. So that's probably something I'm sure we'll talk about when, when the budget amendment maybe comes through. But this might be an apparent question, does inflation affect this income? Is it positive? You know, Mr. Carey, I think was kind of asking a little bit about that. Or is that something that really is a caution for the, for the outlook, where uncertainty, or hopefully this question makes sense? What is the, what is the effect of this potential inflation, I guess combined with all this other uncertainty globally?
Let me take this in two parts. When I think about inflation, you know, most people think about, and definitely investors think about CPI inflation. You know, and, and we think about, you know, CPI in regards to this portfolio and we kind of hit on it. about, you know, CPI in regards to this portfolio, and we kind of hit on it, that if there's moderate inflation, we'd expect equities to do well. Inflation generally, moderate inflation pushes interest rates up. So, you know, we should be able to reinvest at higher yields on that. So, but coming to, you know, inflation for building materials, that's going to be a little bit different than CPI inflation. So there's going to, you know, inflation for shipping goods and services to Alaska, that's going to be a little bit different than this. And also, for you guys, I think when we think about inflation, is, you know, as your tax revenue will go up as inflation goes up, you know, through sales tax and things to that nature. And that's not what we do, you know. But, you know, kind of, kind of think about it in the big picture is, moderate inflation should, you know, this portfolio should return, you know, within a moderate inflation, you know, there should be positive returns, you know, coming out of this portfolio. But is that going to be completely offset for building materials, the cost of building materials? I would say no. I just don't know what direction. My guess is building materials will be higher, and service, you know, costs be higher than, you know, CPI.
And just to clarify, when we talk about CPI, we're talking about what costs we did at the grocery store, and via where the groceries are consumer.
Consumer Price Index, yes. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Chilson?
I'll just conclude by saying, you know, it's, it's a nice thing to be sitting here, contemplating how we're going to handle all this money that we have. I think there are many municipalities that find themselves in positions nowhere near as good as what we have here. And I think that speaks well to the management that we have here at the city. Melanie and Stephanie and all the administration that does our budgeting, and really plans out where we're going to go with that, and then Bill and your team, and the way that you guys invest and handle that. So I'm just great, very, very grateful and appreciative of all that you do for our city. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nothing else, then we'll adjourn this work session. I do have one quick thing. Would there be any objection to moving Ms. Hutchings over here to the vacant seat so she isn't stuck in the corner?
You know, I'm outraged at Sharpe bringing a junk stack.
Yeah, but he could sit, she could sit where?
Yes.
You're fine?
I'm fine.
You're always stuck in the corner, though.
I get away with it.
And thank you for the presentation and everything you do.